Here.
Kristi Lawson.
Yeah.
Kristi Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Silcom. President Mappel.
Present. And I see Maria's here. I think she was just connecting when her name came up.
Yes, I'm here.
I could see your face. All right, um, okay, well, welcome everyone. Let's see, if you require Spanish interpretation, please, actually, I'm going to say it in Spanish. Um, bienvenidos, si necesita interpretación a español por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presión ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno pound para la contraseña también encontrado en el chat gracias y bienvenidos. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We really appreciate it. And I'll go ahead and be posting a little bit more in the chat when I'm done with the welcome in terms of how to make a comment to the board if you'd like to do so. We will most likely have up to three minutes per comment tonight, given the number of speaker cards I see. If the item you wish to address the board is not on the agenda, please address us under oral communication. You'll be called then. And as a reminder, this is a board meeting. We're doing board business, but we certainly welcome all of your input and comments. And I know we've been getting a few more attendees to these meetings, given everything that's going on this year with our pandemic year. And we do ask that the chat will be open. You'll be able to chat to the panelists, so we'll see those questions that come in. We do ask that you try to keep those to the minimum because it is hard to pay attention to the speakers in the chat. But certainly, if you have a quick clarifying question, we're happy to try to answer that or a comment. Some of those we may reflect upon after the meeting, if it gets to be too busy. And let's see, we will be doing our votes by roll call, given that it's a virtual meeting. And anything that I've forgotten? For part of the welcome, okay, all right, well, welcome, everyone. And do I have changes to the agenda?
Um, so at our six o'clock meeting, I made a motion to table the discussion to the seven o'clock meeting, so we'll need to fit in an equity discussion continuing, maybe after nine point one.
I think that's a good place to do it. Does that work for the other board members? Okay, all right, so changes to the agenda would be to add the vision mission. Carryover. So we'll be, we'll be reviewing the vision and mission at that point and getting comments and discussing. So that'll become nine point one B, I suppose. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Well, before we do that, I wasn't sure if we can move eight point one to consent.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It's a resolution, so I think it has to stay on action, but I wanted to check. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one does need to stay there.
And then I don't know if either of the.
It needs to stay on action.
Okay. And then I didn't know if the other items under eleven could be moved. Or if, if the board wants to keep them.
Unless there's questions or comments. I don't see any speaker cards on those items.
So I would propose moving those to consent unless a board member wants to keep them for discussion.
Our interpreters are on standby. Not sure they're able to get in for some reason.
Uh oh.
I just reset the meeting codes to them.
Thank you, Kyle.
Uh, Dr. Montez, I don't know if you want to put something in the chat in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking friends, just in case they're trying to get to the interpreter. Let them know we're working on it. Thank you. So, okay, so I think what I heard, sorry, there's a lot, there's a lot going on sometimes with the Zoom, I have to say, there's a lot of different back back of the technology going on. Okay, anyhow, so let's see, I think what I heard is we will add the vision and mission equity carryover to after nine point one, so between nine point one and nine point two on discussion items, we will move eleven point one and eleven two to consent. Any other changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
That's Maria and Janet. Roll call.
Kristi Wells.
Hi.
Kristi Lawson.
Hi.
Kristi Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Hi.
President Mappel.
Hi. All right, I do not see, let me just double check. Um, I'm just checking on oral communication. Okay, all right, so I don't see any comments under oral communication. So we will go to the school and community reports, and I believe that we have Ms. Sarah Shackle from North Star. Is that right, Dr. Baker?
Correct, and so Kyle, if you will unmute Sarah, that'd be great.
And Kyle, did you get the link that you'll be wanting to show in a few minutes? Okay.
Yes, I got it.
Great. All right, so we'll have Shackle give a, some inter- introductory remarks, and then we'll show the video. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate being able to be here tonight. I was asked to sort of think about something that we could share from North Star, and as with all things, whenever I have a question or try to figure out what to do, I go back to the kids. Our scholars are amazing, and one thing that we do at North Star every Wednesday, actually, is something called the Griffin Gathering. So we have like a full school assembly, one for elementary and one for middle school. And it's a really great way for us to give our scholars a platform to share, to communicate, to talk, to just be together. Um, and so throughout these Griffin Gatherings, we've been doing some kind of cool things, you know, depending on what our clubs are doing, or maybe student council will present. Um, and in one of our last Griffin Gatherings, we had our, their nickname is the GSA. It stands for the Gay Straight Alliance, which is a club that is run by actually our psychologist, who's amazing. We absolutely love her. Shout out to Gabby. Um, and she has been working with this phenomenal group of students, and they had asked if they could do a presentation just to the middle school scholars about transgender visibility. Because as you'll see in the video here in a minute, transgender Day of Visibility is coming up, and so they wanted to sort of present information to our scholars about what it meant, what it is, what they can kind of expect at school. So I'm going to stop talking and let them do all the talking. They are amazing, and I'm so, so, so proud of them. Um, so enjoy.
Difference between gender and sex and more. This is because March 31st is the Transgender Day of Visibility. We hope you learn some things and are more aware after this presentation.
Gender has many definitions, but is usually known as a set of characteristics that were constructed by society. Gender identity, however, is completely self-identified. Gender is a complicated subject, so we won't be getting into it too much. But here, we're talking about gender identity. This has to do with gender expression, pronouns, et cetera. These are both completely different to biological gender or gender assigned, assigned gender or sex, which can or can't match up with your gender identity.
Transgender, often shortened down to trans, is a type of gender identification where you do not identify with your birth-assigned gender. Different gender identities for this can be male-to-female, female-to-male, male-to-non-binary, and female-to-non-binary. It is a common misconception that being trans means either being male or female. This is not true, since being non-binary can also mean being transgender. There are other gender identities such as gender fluid and, fluid and bi-gender. People who are transgender sometimes decide to change the appearance of their body. This can be done in multiple ways, a change in gender expression or, and/or gender confirmation surgery.
Gender dysphoria is a feeling of discomfort around one's gender that is common among transgender people. You don't necessarily have to have dysphoria to be trans, but it is still common. Dysphoria is not liking one's image of their body or appearance in general, since their gender doesn't match their birth-assigned gender. Basically, a severe deficiency of self-esteem. If you don't understand, imagine not being in your own body. You wouldn't feel very comfortable.
Sometimes trans people feel, may feel the need to change their name. Societally, names are gendered, and this causes people to want to have names that fit their gender or identity. Names also change gender over time. For example, Lauren used to be an exclusively male name, but is now a female name. Socially transitioning sometimes includes changing your name.
As well as changing names, some people change their pronouns. Everyone has pronouns that they use, whether that be she/her, he/him, they/them, and we're. A lot of people aren't aware of their own pronouns, usually because they haven't been educated in the fact that you can choose your own pronouns to be used. Neopronouns are pronouns that are newer, as the prefix suggests. Neopronouns are pronouns that people use when other pronouns don't fit them as well. And they may seem like a weird idea and are sometimes harder to learn. You should try to respect someone's pronouns anyway. The ones you see on screen are just a few examples of neopronouns. Some don't care about pronouns and use all of them. This can be, but is not necessarily gender fluidity. Others might just use one set. A lot of people use two or more different sets of pronouns, but can have a difference, which can be, but again, isn't always called a bi-gender or pan-gender.
Although so many adults in the world identify as transgender, they still face so much discrimination for it. The Trump administration tried to deny transgender adults of healthcare and other benefits because they were trans. Trans adults also weren't allowed to serve in the military under the Trump administration. The Biden administration had, has called for significant LGBTQ plus protections, including offering federal support for trans athletes. Also, recently, Congress has passed the Equality Act, which prohibits discrimination based on sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity in education, federal funding, employment, housing, and more. Also, the bill defines and includes sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity in a prohibited category of discrimination and segregation.
Transgender children face just as much, if not more, discrimination than transgender adults. Transgender kids are told that they are too young to know their gender by parents and other adult figures. They are also refused usage of their bathrooms, as well as being called slurs by discriminatory people. Transgender students might feel unsafe at school because of their gender expression, as well as not being able to use the correct name and pronouns. For students in high school, locker rooms can feel very unsafe and uncomfortable because of their body dysphoria. Transgender students can be viewed as a threat to their peers in some schools. Some people will say that being trans is a choice, when it is in fact not. Trans people's brains actually align more with the gender they identify with, rather than the gender they were assigned at birth. Gender is shown through different amounts of gray matter in the brain, and this would be another definition of gender.
The trans community within the LGBTQ plus community is a big part of active activism. One example is Martha P, Marsha P. Johnson with the Stonewall Riots. Lately, transphobia has been shown a lot with J.K. Rowling, the LGBT allowance, and the LGBTQ LGBTQ plus in trans communities themselves. Discrimination, as previously said, is everywhere. Transphobia is being fought against with the trans rights, rights movement. However, not all trans people are in the last century. One of the earliest recorded trans person was a servant around 1620 who claimed to be a man and a woman at different times.
There are a lot of things you can do for trans equality. This can include helping your community to be more trans-inclusive, informing people in your community of issues relating to trans, relating trans to activism, educating people on the trans community in order to eliminate ignorance and prejudice, and a whole lot more. If you'd like to be more involved with this at our school, you can join the GSA. To do this, just come to our meeting, the link is in the Griffin Gathering email, every Wednesday from 12:30 to 1:00. There's no signup required, and even when you are in the group, all of the meetings are optional. If you're interested in books, a good book with transgender characters, as well as multiple gay characters, is Felix YZ by Lisa Bunker. That's L.I.S.A.B.U.N.K.E.R.
Oh, have a wonderful transgender awareness day, and remember.
You are valid.
Well, that was truly impressive. That was an all-student effort, is that what you're saying?
Legitimately, that was in, from start to finish entirely them. They asked if they could do it to present to our, you know, our middle school scholars. They helped me communicate with parents about what was going to happen. They wrote it, they directed it, they presented this to our scholars, and then today they recorded the video for you, so, uh, I had nothing to do with it. They, they are amazing, and they just, they're, it's, it's all the kids.
Well, that is so impressive. That is so aligned with the work we've been doing under our Equity Committee, which we were just talking about in our study session, and how important student voice is, right?
Yep.
So, thank you so much, and I'm thinking, I'm sure some of our teachers and administrators are already thinking about how they can use it at their school site as we move into this month, so.
Absolutely.
So much, and I know several of us are ready to order the book that was recommended.
Yeah, I, I want to add, um, I actually already just placed my order because it was so easy to pull up on Amazon and just like buy now and it's done. Um, so I do want to say too that we have, um, it was before COVID, so I guess it was 2019, put together an LGBTQ plus policy. Um, and so, you know, I, I feel like this is really fantastic to see these GSA groups forming at the different school sites, and I'd like to see that expand to all of our school sites. Um, I think it's really important, and love seeing the students in leadership and putting this information together to share with their peers and the adults around them. I think it's really helpful.
Thank you. I learned a lot. It was great.
Can I just add, I, I mean, I, first of all, I love the way we start the board meetings off with the students' presentations and the work that they're doing, but the content here is great. I mean, being able to talk about these subjects and have the kids instill to present it is really part of what's going to make an identity safe school. Um, and that's the kind of environment we want our kids to feel safe in their identity when they're there, and so I really appreciate this work. It's great.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you very, very much. Really appreciate it, and thank you to the North Star students. Really loved hearing from you, and thank you for helping to educate all of us.
Yeah, so I also would like to say that, again, it was a fantastic presentation. Um, and as I'm listening, I want to hear my news from those voices. They just presented so well, so again, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And I would just echo all those feelings. They were wonderful.
Thank you.
I will share all of your kind words with them.
Wonderful, and I'm also wondering if we could get the link up on the agenda? Just so it's there in case others want to refer back to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we will move to our next agenda item, which are the bond program consent items. Great. Um, all right, so these are the consent ones, so I need a motion to approve?
Oops, I'll second.
Okay, Maria and Janet? All those in favor? Or no, wait a minute, Eliana will call us.
Kristi Wells.
Hi.
Kristi Lawson.
Hi.
Kristi Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Hi.
President Mappel.
Hi. All right, and now we have our bond program action item. Welcome, Will Robertson. I heard your voice earlier, and I know we have Don Diaz on here.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Do you guys have any questions about this resolution?
I think you did a great job explaining it in the board memo and the resolution, so if there's no questions, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
So Maria and then Mike? Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Wells.
Hi.
Kristi Lawson.
Hi.
Kristi Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Hi.
President Mappel.
Hi. All right, well, thank you very much to our facilities group for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Night.
Okay, on to discussion items. So nine point one, expansion of the school district January reopening. Dr. Baker.
All right, very good. Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Uh, Kyle, if you could put up the slide deck, it'd be great. I didn't get a slide deck. Oh, you didn't get it. Ellie, do you have a slide deck? Someone has it.
I do. Give me just one second.
Somebody can just send it to me via email. I can get it up pretty quickly.
It's attached to the agenda item.
Okay.
Sorry, I have it in PDF. I was not expecting to show my screen. Give me just one second. Can you see the?
Yeah, so Ellie, even if you wanted to share that with me, I can get it up there and run through it.
I, I think I got it.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Ellie, for doing this up there. I really appreciate it. So with tonight, we are going to go through the spring expansion. And as you know, each of the, each of the schools within our school district this week have been providing some transition activities for those students who have not been, been in school at all this school year. And there are some numbers that are going to be shared this evening, uh, and in the deck, but I just got in the chat that Roy Clouds may not be correct, so we will have to look at that tomorrow morning and correct them uh, in meeting with the principal to get the correct numbers, but we will do that. So, next slide, please. So, go on to the next slide. And I'm going to turn this portion of the presentation over to Liz Bull, as she's been working closely with the principals.
Sure, and what we have following here are just a, a large number of slides that look kind of like this one for each school. And if there are some mistakes on this, I think it could very easily be because the numbers have been changing pretty rapidly. And so I apologize if there are some mistakes, but we have had our office, our administrators and our office staff working on kind of giving us an update on the numbers of students who are currently onsite, either in a classroom or on a hub. And, and then how many students are going to be returning, starting in April, so that you can see the difference in numbers. And so, basically, each, we've got 12 slides here, one for each school, and then at the end, we have a comparison of our numbers. But just to show you the way these are organized, is that they are organized by grade level for the return in April, and then a total number for currently as of kind of today. Um, and again, because of the, some people came back a couple of days before April, and some people came back in, you know, October, and so we've got some, a variety of different numbers reflected here. But we can just go through these so that you can see, this is Adelante Selby. Um, again, with the total number of students who will be returning beginning in April, the week that we come back after spring break, there'll be a total number of 355 students in person in class with 275 continuing in distance learning. Compared to currently, there's 158 students onsite, and not all of them, some of them are in hubs, right? And not necessarily being talked directly by their classroom teacher, with 471 students in distance learning. So I'm not going to read these out to you unless you'd like me to do that for each slide, but maybe we could just go, Kyle, if you wanted to go through the slides and people can look at them, and then we can talk about if they have any questions at the end. So this is Adelante Selby's numbers. And the next slide is Clifford. And Clifford also, some schools added their SDC numbers as well. So we have that reflected here. And you, again, you can see the difference between the students who will be onsite the first week of April and those continuing distance learning compared to the number of students onsite now. And you see, again, quite a large increase in numbers of students who will be onsite. And the next slide.
Liz, if you don't mind, just for the benefit of the audience who may have smaller screens, and also for me, who has a smaller screen, could you, uh, go ahead and just do the high-level numbers, not every grade number, but I think that's helpful, just to give us a sense of where we're at today.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. I didn't want to do that if I felt redundant, so I'm happy to do it.
And, and actually, somebody mentioned this, this was attached to the agenda, but I didn't see it, so did, did it recently get on?
It was on later on this afternoon.
Oh, I bet I have to refresh my screen. Okay, all right, I'll do that, but if you don't mind.
I posted the attachment this afternoon, so it should be.
Okay, thanks.
So at Garfield, we have a total number of students who will be returning to in-person instruction, 223. Compared to currently, there are 167 students on campus. 304 students will be remaining in distance learning next month, with 360 students currently in distance learning. Henry Ford. Is, Alyssa, would you like me to read currently, what's the best way to read this?
I think exactly what you just did for Garfield.
Okay.
Perfect, because I do think, I know some people call in with their phones as well, and there's no way they could read this.
Okay, okay.
So I do think it's helpful, just.
Sure, okay. Yeah. So next month, when students return to Henry Ford, they all actually have quite a few students in person at this time, but there will be a total of 296 students who will be in person receiving instruction kindergarten through fifth grade, and including their special day classes, with 202 students remaining in distance learning. Currently, they have 142 students who are in-person instruction on campus, with 372 students who are in distance learning. So again, you see a big increase in the number of students who will be returning, and a decrease in students in distance learning. At Hoover, we have, you'll see a big difference here. There will be 321 students who will be on campus, receiving instruction from their teachers, beginning in April, and that also includes their SDC classes, with 396 students remaining in distance learning. Currently, there are 173 students who are onsite, receiving instruction from classroom teachers, but mostly from the hubs, from the Boys and Girls Club, with 544 students in distance learning. So again, you see a big increase in the number of students who will be returning to in-person instruction at Hoover. At Kennedy, there will be 286 students who will be in, in-person instruction, with 397 students remaining in distance learning. As you know, the middle schools have a little bit, have a bigger challenge in terms of developing their structure, their, their schedules with the current restrictions on space and changing classrooms. But the middle schools have worked very hard to figure out how, as many students as possible to bring them back on, on to campus, because currently, right now, there are only 107 students on the Kennedy campus, receiving either instruction from a Boys and Girls Club, or from a hub or a pod. Not the Boys and Girls Club. Remember, it was the Kennedy.
They are reach.
Reach, reach, thank you. And then there are 575 students who are currently in full-time distance learning at Kennedy. At MIT, there will be 107 students who will be returning to in-person instruction compared to the 79 students who are onsite right now. Trying to mix it up a little bit about how I tell the story. With 146 students who are going to be remaining in distance learning compared to the 220 who are currently in distance learning. With 146 students who are going to be remaining in distance learning compared to the 220 who are currently in distance learning. So again, you see the change in the numbers of students who will be on campus. North Star, we have a large percentage of students who will be in-person instruction. We have 442 students who will be in-person in April with 204 currently in-person. And again, many of those being in hubs or in the pilot classrooms. 77 students will be remaining in distance learning at North Star next month. Currently, there are 315 students who are in full distance learning. Orion has two programs onsite. There is the Mandarin immersion program and the parent participation program. And in the Mandarin immersion program, there will be 131 students who are returning to in-person instruction with 169 remaining in distance learning. And in the parent participation program, 132 students will return with 144 students remaining in distance learning. And currently, the numbers that we have are combined between the two programs with only 40 students on campus. And those are in a hub or in the SDC classroom or in one kindergarten with 381 students between the two programs who are currently in distance learning. At Roosevelt, there will be 222 students who are returning to in-person instruction compared to 201. So as you see, Roosevelt already has a pretty robust in-person program taking place, but there will be more people returning next month with 339 students in distance learning and five, next month with 502 students currently in distance learning. And TACTT, as you know, also already has quite a number of students who have returned. And there will be 171 students who are returning to in-person learning in April with 121 students remaining in distance learning with currently 203 students in person. A lot of them in the, also in the Boys and Girls Club with 156 students in distance learning. And then the last slide shows the total of, for April, our return will be 3,223 students with in-person instruction. 3,300, did I say that backwards? 3,223 students in person, 3,322 students remaining in distance learning.
So as we were going through the slide deck, there were some comments that the numbers aren't correct according to what they've been hearing at their school sites. So we will review these numbers with a couple, actually three schools to see if they are correct. And we will update the slide deck. The slide deck will be part of the recording that goes out along with the agenda. You can hit the agenda link and you'll see the updates. But we'll check it tomorrow morning. We'll check with those three principals. Want to get this.
Yeah, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Baker, Liz Wolf, and all the principals and everybody who's working on this. And I think some of the numbers that people may be seeing, it's in part that they still are in flux, right? Because I know we asked for surveys to get a sense of if people wanted to be in-person or distant learning. And sometimes as parents get more information, they make different decisions. So anyway, I know it's been, again, a puzzle piece that we've been, we've been working on a puzzle all year long. So this is just a continuation of it. So I just want to say thank you very much. And I think the numbers are really just to give us an idea. And I know that at the school site, they will know who's coming and who's at home remotely working, so. And I think there's been a few questions about the totals. Do these totals of the in-person and distant learning on this last slide, does that actually add up to our total number of students?
You know, what I need to do, Alyssa, I need to look at that. So I would look at the P2, P2 section.
Okay.
Audit that's coming forward in the near future within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I could easily see if the students that are in them, you know, we're not sure yet. So maybe they didn't show up on either of these numbers, just to answer the question to the audience. So.
There'll be a P2 attendance count, and that'll tell us, including children have left over this time period from P1. So the numbers that I could give you of what the number of students that we had on P1 could differ from what P2 was going to be that we submit to this date.
And Dr. Baker, these two categories wouldn't include students that are doing independent study. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so if we could go on to the next slide, please, Kyle. So as I said previously, when we started at the schools this week, it's that transition period for students who have not been on school campuses at all this school year. So Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, there are different groups coming to the school sites by grade level to get to learn about their school site, especially for those little kindergartners and all those students who have not been in the Redwood City School District to get acclimated with the site, to learn about safety protocols and to meet people who they will be interacting with on a regular basis. So the next slide, please, Kyle, or is it Ellie? I'm sorry. So this is just some scenes from Clifford where there's physical distancing. Of course, there's signage. And of course, we now have a touchless faucet at the school site. And they're also in the bathrooms. And I want to, I'm either Martin or Donna here, but I just wanted to make sure that they're all, that they're all in place at this point in time. I've been told, yes, that you never know. There can be a hiccup with an order that's not been delivered at this point in time. We did have some difficulties with the touchless faucets getting to, especially those school sites that started earlier. We wanted it at that time, and they were in back order, but from my understanding, everything is in place. Next slide, please. So this is Hoover. This is some physical distancing and the playground protocols that are in place. These are students that are visiting the campus for the first time, who haven't been with us for a while. Here's some other scenes. These are from Orion. If you can go back to that a little quickly. This is where Jorge was today, along with myself. I happened to visit Orion and was doing some temperature checks for the kids that were getting out of their car. These are all, I don't, these are kindergarten and first graders. And especially for the kindergarten students who are new, it was really amazing to see that they were really anxious to get out of the car and meet their teacher. The teacher was there waiting for them and the parents just dropped them off. And no problems with children crying or anything. They just went along with their principal and also any of the other people that were volunteering, went to the class to line up and met their teacher. Next slide. So this is a piece that I wanted to talk about because there's a lot of communication going on in our communities. And the superintendents within San Mateo County had several meetings regarding six feet to three foot distancing. And we started this last week when the CDC guidelines came out. Next slide, please. So the CDC now recommends that with this universal, with universal masking, we should maintain a distance of at least three feet in classroom settings. This came into play on March 19. Next slide. Since March 19, the superintendents in San Mateo County had several meetings. And I know some of you board members who are on the elected official calls during the last week have also heard information. And Superintendent McGee from the County Office of Education, also on March 19, forwarded an immediate press release. But currently, the six feet distance is the requirement in San Mateo County schools. The California Department of Public Health and the California Department of Education are reviewing these federal guidelines and updating the guidance for schools to align with the CDC. The state continues to update and complete the new guidance materials. So San Mateo County Health aims to quickly align its local guidance with CDC and state guidance. So at yesterday's meeting with superintendents, with County Superintendent McGee, she said, I stated in my release, and I'm going to state this again to you. You cannot move forward with a three-foot distance until those new guidelines come out from San Mateo County Health. She said they should be coming out within the next couple of weeks. But she said, but she told us, we are all to adhere to the six-foot guidance. So for any of our community members that are out there that are asking their administrators, they need to move to three feet. We need to move to three feet. We can't do it. The board cannot require me to do it until this takes place with the new guidance from San Mateo County Health. So I just want to make sure that you, as board members, understand that and our public understands that. I have been meeting with the principals and with our director of maintenance on this three-foot movement. And as soon as we get the guidance to go in that direction, we are going to make sure that we can create that three feet in each of our classrooms. And it was also noted that when that does take place, this new three-foot distance in classrooms will be from pre-K through 12th grade. If you recall, when we were previously with the six feet, there was all this question about middle school and high school. That will no longer exist. It'll be three feet. The thing that we must continue to adhere to also is with our adults, our teachers, our staff members, they must always be at six feet apart. We must also make sure anyone coming into our campuses to do any thing that is going to allow them to work in an office or to take something to a classroom or when we're allowed to have volunteers, that those volunteers, if they're together, are six feet apart. That will not go away for any adult activity that is taking place. We will also still be under the guidance of wearing masks, the hygiene protocol, and also making sure that the protocol in small groups is adhered to, that there are no large gatherings. That is not going to change with these new guidance that's going to come from San Mateo County Health. The other thing that was noted at yesterday's superintendent's meeting. Superintendent McGee said, for those of us that are going to move forward with this three feet, because there are some districts that are concerned about going in that direction, we are not one of them. We do not need to create that reopening plan again. There is just going to be a checklist for the guidance with us, by us, myself, Liz Wolf, making sure that we're adhering to everything, check it off and sign it, send it to the county office of ed and make sure it's up on our on our website. Are there any questions?
Just to clarify too, even if middle school is going to be allowed hopefully to move to the three-foot social distancing, there's no changes in the need for stable cohort, correct?
There is no, that is true. Thank you. There is no need. There is still a need for a stable cohort. There is.
So that's still going to impact what middle school can look like.
Yes, that'll still affect.
Thanks.
And I think the thing that's tricky, I know that we have many parents who are hoping that when we go from six feet to three feet, if we're able to do that this year, which we may be able to, we're sort of waiting on the guidance. There's still the issue that at some school sites where you've got half in-person and half distant learning, it still may not allow for a full day of synchronous instruction or in-person instruction by the teacher. Am I correct? I mean, I know you're going to be working on the schedules where there's some school sites where there's more doing one thing than the other. It makes it easier to sort of figure out how to make it all work, right? But I don't know if you could speak to that a little bit? Or is it too early to know given schedules?
Well, we do have schedules at this point in time adhering to the six feet. And meeting with the principals today and listening to their comments and their planning and moving forward in this direction, each school is different. And when we look at each school, we're looking at each classroom. Each classroom is about 1,000 square feet, if I'm not mistaken. There are some that are a little bit smaller, most of them are 1,000 square feet. But then within that 1,000 square feet, you've got the bookcases, you've got, some of our schools have these built and wall, I want to say built-in, they're built out, wall cabinets where they stick out in the classroom. They're not, you know, recessed. And so that creates a little less space in the room. So we're going to look at it school by school and classroom by classroom. But my intention is to move to that three feet. Questions about that? I know, I hear that, I hear you all being quiet.
Well, I think that I still haven't, you know, I haven't seen the current schedules. I know we'll be seeing those soon because I know they're still being massaged in terms of what they look like. And then the changes that would happen if we go from, well, when we go from six to three feet. And so I think the question is still out there. Does that allow us to lengthen the school day for in-person students? Because right now, you know, a lot of it's an AMP model. I mean, what's hard is that if you still have half and half at some school sites and some grade levels, which I saw in the slide tonight, it's still going to be hard to, with the staffing we have, to basically be able to provide any group a longer day with their own teacher, or am I missing something? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
That makes sense. It does make sense, Alyssa, because at some of our school sites, when I look at the numbers and when you look, when I look at the numbers at each school site, at some school sites, the numbers are small to in with. So if you had students that wanted to, those that are distance learning, say, the teacher says, you know, I really want to have in-person. And if you come along with us in-person, I can do this. I can do it all day. And the number is small. And when I'm speaking, and then when I'm speaking that the number is small, it's between 22 and 24 students in our classrooms. And that's with, you know, three feet and making sure that a lot of the big bulky furniture that's in the classroom is taken out and stored for the remainder of the school year. So what is going to occur is once this happens and once this takes place, which is going to occur within the next few weeks, as you well know, and you also probably heard the same information at the meeting that you attended, within the next few weeks be a valid guidelines that are coming forward. I'm going to have the maintenance department go into it because we'll be on spring break during the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, see what Martin and his team can determine for each classroom, what that would look like for how many students at three feet.
Yeah, so I think once we see the schedules and once you have a chance, I mean, once we see the current schedules and then once you have a chance to, again, look at what it looks like going from six feet to three feet, you can share those schedules and we'll have a better sense of what that is. I do know there's some questions in the chat around the six feet to three feet. Certainly by next year, we should be at three feet, which would enable us to do, and our intention, I believe, is to do sort of a regular school day, correct?
That is correct. And matter of fact, it's the expectation that we do a regular school day.
Right. Right. You know, instructional minutes, the, the length of the day. Of course, people will probably still be wearing masks and needing to social distance, but hopefully a smaller social distance.
Correct.
Correct. Because I know that's been a big question for next year as people are making plans.
Right.
Okay.
And that was heavily discussed yesterday with the superintendents to expect that you will have a regular school day next year. But we will talk more about that at a future board meeting.
Great. Okay. Let me look and just see are there any other board members that have questions on this? I think we still have more of the presentation, right?
I think, no, I believe this is the last.
So this is the last slide. Okay. Oh, great. We're at discussion. Okay. I know we have a couple of speaker cards as well. So let me see, would you, board members, would you like to take the speaker cards and then ask questions and speak, or do you have questions now?
I'm fine taking speaker cards first.
Uh, I also think we should hear the speaker's cards first.
All right. So I believe we have, uh, let's see, I wrote down Linda Joya and then followed by Maria Stockton, and I'll see if there's any others.
So Linda's been allowed to speak.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Linda Hoya. I, um, my children attend Roy Cloud. Um, I am going to say upfront, I'm completely frustrated with the current situation. Um, I'm speaking for numerous parents as well as myself, that the last year has been completely, for lack of a better word, shameful with a highly educated, highly paid district that could not find a way to get our kids back in the classroom at this point for more than 2.75 hours a day. Uh, the contracts that were signed and agreed upon set the students up for failure. Uh, it's shameful that my kids have been home for a year while the student across the street attended an in-person class in September. How you can say my children will not be behind without the same opportunities as the child across the street, I don't understand. I'm a stay-at-home parent. I don't need a babysitter, but I wasn't and am not an educator. I have done my best helping my children with math problems and writing questions that I ever thought possible. I've graded papers and made corrections because those things are not happening through a screen. So at this point, to say that 2.75 hours a day, four days a week, is satisfying the public demand to open. I don't understand because what is 2.75 hours a day? Better than nothing is saying the bare minimum is good enough. Um, I'm hoping for a change for the six foot to three foot because I feel like that will make a difference. We have parents at Roy Cloud that have siblings that will have to drive to Roy Cloud four times a day. So they can drop off the two siblings at two different school schedules. I'm tired of my kids being home while I watch the kids across the street attend school. And I need my children to be educated by a certified educator, not myself. More than 2.75 hours a day, four days a week. Why we're not doing, at the bare minimum, why we're not doing five days a week? Because of some union contract? I don't understand. But four days a week instead of five, to me, shows either your priorities or how we've failed the students. Because I, I, I'm just a loss for words as how my children, at even at this point after a year. They are not attending school for 2.75 hours a day, five days a week. It's only four. So I, I, I feel that the district has literally failed my kids. And as a parent, I, I just am so lost. I don't even know what to do for them anymore. Shameful.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments and I'm sorry for, well, for, for the frustration and certainly, um, yeah, what you said. All right. So Maria Stockton, you're next.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Okay. I just have a couple of questions. Uh, Dr. Baker touched on some of it. I, I understand about the uh, distance between children possibly changing from six feet to three feet. And it was stated that the adults will remain six feet uh, from each other, but right now, uh, will it be changing the six foot to a, from adult to child? Will that be changing the three feet? Uh, right now it has remained at six feet. So I was wondering if that's going to be changing. Uh, another concern is that I think when some of the parents made a decision to come to school, they did not understand that the SAM trans- transportation will not be providing service to our school. So I'm wondering if the district kind of remembered that might be a difference in some of our students coming in. Do you have any plan of possibly providing any transportation to those students? And the last one I wanted to ask about is, uh, when we have uh, classrooms that have AM and PM classes. I believe it's set up that our custodians will go in with the disinfectant machine and disinfect the classrooms. Uh, my concern is our bus drivers who cannot take the same amount of students on the buses. Uh, will now have to bring kids to school and then I believe they have to go out and get some more. Uh, and they're just cleaning the buses with Clarks wipes. Now, we took training that said cleaning is not the same as disinfecting and vice versa. So I'm wondering if the district has taken this into consideration that you're going to have one group of students on the bus and without really disinfecting with the spray machine. Uh, that another group will be coming in, in a clo- you know, although the windows will be open, still they're close together enough. And if it goes to three feet, it'll be different on that too. But uh, I did see that there are portable handheld disinfectant sprayers that I'm wondering if the district might consider buying those for the bus drivers to disinfect the buses in between those groups of children that they have to bring. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Eliana, are there any other speaker cards?
There is a speaker card for opening. I don't know if that's the correct agenda item.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. We just had a couple more come in, actually. I wanted to make sure I didn't share my screen with this again. I'm having trouble. Yeah. Okay. Actually.
So is the one on line six and line seven, are they on this agenda?
I think those are the new ones that just came in. All right. So Devon Mulaney and then Catherine Stewart. And then we'll go ahead and go to board comments after this. All right, Devon, go ahead.
Uh, hi. Um, yeah, I, thanks for taking the time to listen to all of us and our concerns. It's something that's been brought to light for us as parents. Is a, my understanding was that all of the students who wanted to return would be able to be with their teacher for in-person instruction. And if the, uh, if the six feet is not reduced to three feet. Um, we've been told that, um, we would end up with a, an APod situation instead of in the classroom. And I just wanted to, I, I was hoping that that adjustment would be made faster by the state and by the county to compensate for it. So there'd be no kind of misinformation or confusion or adjustments that, that weren't, uh, weren't quite what was expected. So that's, um, that's one of the main things that I and my wife have been concerned about. We've, I understand the struggles of parents and having their students at home. I understand the struggles of the teachers and trying to accommodate all of the interactions and connections and and then if you're a teacher at home with your children, that's an extra wrinkle. We just, we, we, um, want to make sure that it's being thought through that it was stated that all the students who wanted to return would be in the classroom with their teacher if they chose to return. And we'd just like the follow-through on there to be maintained. And I was, like I said, I was really hoping that the social distancing guidelines would be adjusted. And then it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a factor, but it seems like we may be coming to a little bit of a head on that for maybe not a lot of us, but for a few of us, um, trying to get our kids back. So something to please, if you can respond to it now, that'd be great. And if it's something that you need to think through, please think quickly. All right. Thank you for the time and have a good evening.
Right. I may need some clarity on the pod versus the classroom. Dr. Baker, do you understand that particular issue?
So there are some stu- there are some children that are in a pod, but the pods are normally at the middle school level. So, um, I don't know if his child is at the middle school, but I'd have to find out what school to better understand. But, um, from his concern, it's he wants to make sure that all students who wanted to return in person would be able to return in person and stay with their teacher. That's what I heard. So I, I would need to know, um, normally that's the case that has been occurring. But I, I don't know what's, what he's from.
I think what I might recommend, because we may have a number of parents with specific questions about their own kid on here. I think it might be best if they certainly contact the principal to get a clarity around what's going on. And if for some reason that still doesn't seem to make sense or you're unhappy, then certainly you can always send Dr. Baker or the board an email so we can get a better clarity on that. But I, I just know that, you know, part of it again is going back to what I said earlier. Is it is a, it is a puzzle trying to put it together. And I know the intention is that every student who wants to come back in person will come back in person, ideally with their current teacher, right? But as you can see by the slides that we saw earlier tonight, it gets a little tricky when you have different numbers of in-person and distant learning in a classroom. And with the six feet, three feet, or the six feet, as well as just having some kids at home and some kids in the classroom. It's just trying to put it all together is, you know, is complicated. I think you can all appreciate that. So I know that, uh, principals working with Dr. Baker and Liz Wolf and others are working hard to put together schedules that work. You know, that, that work, um, for the students to be able to be educated, whether it's in person or at home, I think is the, yeah. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we can check because Wendy just texted me that Devon's child is on the long pace. So I would need to talk.
Okay. So Devon, we'll check into that specifically then. Thank you.
Peter and then Devon, also one of our employees.
Okay, to our attention. All right. Okay. So we have, let's see, we had another. Oh, Catherine Stewart. I knew we had another, uh, speaker. And then, and then we will address some of the other comments. I know in our comments. Um, from the other speakers, but go ahead, Catherine.
Um, hi. Yes. Sorry. I have some kind of complicated and very specific questions about Mandarin immersion over at Orion. Um, using independent study compared to just changing over to a different teacher. The key points I, I'm, I'm asking about are if we use independent study, does that mean that we will definitely get to keep the better immersion and level Chinese programs that we are currently using? Is that a definite yes, that we will not be switched because it wouldn't be changing teachers if we stay on it, if we stay and become independent study? Our other option is, is to change to a teacher that is a parent participation Orion teacher from eight fifteen to eleven fifteen. And then at some point, someone would connect us with Lou Lausha for 30 minutes of Mandarin teaching at some point during the day, which we don't know about what time that would be at. So the problem with changing to a different teacher is if we change accounts from the clever portal and you get changed over to a different teacher, you don't get to keep the stuff that you were using. And since the new teacher doesn't use any of those things, we wouldn't have access to any of those things. So that's kind of a really specific question, but it makes a big difference because we have to quickly make a decision as to whether we're going to go to independent study. Meaning no teacher help, no Mandarin help whatsoever. And the thing, the benefit we would get would be that we would be able to keep our clever stuff with the Mandarin stuff on it, or would be better off for us to change teachers knowing that we wouldn't be able to keep our Mandarin stuff. So that's kind of what we're trying to figure out. And you, can you give us an answer on that?
Catherine, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go back and talk to, uh, Principal Rivera, because I know she's worked out. Well, she, since you've talked to her, she's worked out some other things. So please talk to her. I cannot ask, answer your question since number one, I'm not a site administrator, plus I'm not uh, the instructor in Mandarin immersion. So I'm at a loss.
Okay. Cause yeah, we're going from having, um, a, a choice of having either 30 minutes four times a week, which is a total of two hours of Mandarin instruction. Um, or having no hours of Mandarin instruction. But if we did independent study, if we could keep all that stuff that we use, the technology we use. She would at least have something.
Yes, yes. And, and, and if you talk to Catherine, she has worked, she just worked out, worked something out with Kyle in regard to apps and so forth. So make sure you give Catherine a call.
Yeah, we've had a little difficulty getting communication about these things.
Well, she and I, well, she's always been out at Orion doing all these tours too. So I was with her today and she didn't stop. And I heard she's been doing that Monday and Tuesday. So bear with us and, and as far as you're, as, as part of the MI program, who's going to do what, what teacher's going to do what? She would know that, but the app piece and the technology piece, I know she's worked that out with Kyle.
Can they not turn off our access to, to the, uh, to the level Chinese and the better immersion until we get it worked out? Because if, I know from experience of having ported children from one classroom to the other classroom.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're going to have to move on. Um, I do appreciate the details you're bringing up, and I think this highlights the complication when we've got students choosing different modes of education and we have a certain number of staff and resources, correct? So anyway, so, uh, we're going to have to move on from this, but as, uh, Dr. Baker said, please contact Ms. Rivera uh, tomorrow. And it sounds like she's got some other things worked out. So hopefully we can help accommodate some of your concerns around the language. And I will say, I, I do know in talking to Dr. Baker. You know, the language immersion has been a little more complicated because you've got specialty teachers and things like that. So I think that's the case both in Spanish immersion and Mandarin immersion, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Dr. Baker?
Correct. That is correct.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it's a little tricky, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm sure, it sounds like you're already aware of it. Um, okay. So thank you for the comments. Why don't we move to board questions or comments? And feel free in your comments, if you want to try to address some of the comments, feel free to do that as well.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't address the speaker comments. I can re-ask their, one of their questions though, which I thought was good. But first of all, thanks, Dr. Baker, Assistant Superintendent Wolf, for working with all the administrators, the site administrators, really everybody at the school district for, you know, getting this together. It's coming right up on, into spring break. And then right afterwards, um, this big transition. So it's, it's remarkable to see all that work in there. I think it's good that we're getting, you know, you're preparing, at least looking at what the three feet option is. I totally get that we can't do anything for that. One of the things, I'm going to risk trying to re-ask Alyssa's question, but. But in a way of asking, do we know that that's, will people still be choosing distance learning? Even if we go back to three feet and can bring them back to a full day and what is going to happen there? I, in the fall, we can set up a virtual academy and do all of that. Right now, that's a big complication there. I, you don't have to have the answer now, but I think that's the point that, at least that's the way I interpreted what her question was. And so I know that's a complication.
Like, if that was her question, we still need to, this school year, as I was told by Chief Deputy Claire Cunningham, we must maintain a virtual program because that's what we started with, that and now in person. So it still must be maintained for those parents who have chosen to go in that direction. So that you are connected, we have to.
Lots, lots of details still. I totally understand. The other one around the transportation, I know you've been working on transportation. We've talked about it in the past. I wasn't sure if you had an update there about that.
Trans is not doing any transportation right, right now. So what Martin is doing, and we were going to talk a little bit about this on Friday, is to see where we are with private vendors at this point in time. And he has been in contact with them. So we have not only Clifford, but there's also some of our other school sites that were receiving transportation. And due to the fact that you have to distance in a manner in which the guidance says now, if we could just do every other seat, we would be fine. And we could handle a lot of the transportation ourselves. The guidance says, no, you cannot do that. So that's why we are looking at outside vendors to transport students. And still, we'll be meeting tomorrow to find out where he is with that.
I, that sounded like some of the numbers might be changing from that slide deck. So maybe this question isn't even worth it. But, you know, some schools are in the low forties for return, some are well over fifty percent for return. And I just wasn't sure if we had a sense of what, why people are making choices. Is it, you know, is it that they don't have a full day? And it's really about getting to three feet, it's gonna fix, may fix that, may not. Like, I wasn't sure.
I am going to ask you for one of the rationales to look at the video that I sent you that our teacher was interviewed by ABC seven. Gave a really good explanation of why she doesn't have all her kids back, how she, you know, worked with each parent. So that's one reason there. Some, it's, it's, it could, it is the full day piece. And some, it's the AMP, especially if there is not childcare. Now, I want to shout out to the childcare providers, for example, at Clifford and at Cloud, who really helped when these schedules were made and also PCC. There was really a lot of work that they helped the principals with to make sure they could still provide what they were doing. So a big shout out to them and the Boys and Girls Club was helping us. But there is that issue with some of our parents regarding the AMP schedule. But when you view her, the video that was on last week, she did an amazing job of what she wanted off all her kids. But she gave some responses of why parents chose not to do it.
I saw it. Yeah. And I wasn't sure if that was a trend across the classrooms or, and the return.
Some of our schools, it is a trend.
Okay. You, you got my other one on the, you already jumped into the extended supervision question there. So I think that was the only other thing, how, how it was going with the community partnerships for the extended supervision. It sounds like that's coming together.
It's coming together. And I want to, like I say, a big thank you to Boys and Girls Club, PCC, Kids Corner, the Reach Program. A big thank you to them for helping us out.
Thanks for the update.
So thank you for the presentation and just all the data that's come together, Liz. Thank you for all of that. I'm a data person, so I'm planning on going home later and kind of inputting it in my own spreadsheets and looking at other numbers and stuff like I do. I wanted to address one of the questions from the public comments, I think it was Linda Hoya, who expressed frustration with having the two point seven five hours only, four days a week. And I understand that frustration. You know, my own child is receiving just about that same for one of my kids. And I think what that comes down to though, is the social distancing requirements. You know, if we have fifteen kids that are in person in the morning and, and all thirty in a classroom want to be in person, you've got fifteen in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon. So that is the reason there's limited hours. And I don't think that, certainly I would not say that that's good enough. And I don't think anybody here is saying it's good enough, but really it's all we can do right now. And I'm hoping that if Dr. Morrow changes, and I'm expecting that he will, the social distancing requirement, we will be able to expand those hours that the kids are in the classroom. At least for the ones that are in person, both in the afternoon and in the morning. I would say for my own child, that's not going to change because he's in person in the morning. And then the afternoon is the distance learning group. So he's going to maintain the, you know, three hours in the morning and that's it. It's what we have to work with, unfortunately. And I think everybody's doing the best we can to do the best that we can with what we have. And, and I understand it's frustrating. I really get that. It's really hard for families. And we'll get there. And then I wanted to say to, this came up at drop off for one of my kids the other day. My husband said it was really crazy and I had to remind him. And I want to remind staff and the public and families, when we go back to school in August, those first two weeks are crazy at drop off. And I think that come April, we're going to experience that just as people settle into the routines. So try not to get frustrated if there's longer lines and people are confused and not knowing what's going on. It'll settle in. It'll happen. And I know it's just like back to school in August. It's, it's hard to start out and get everybody into their routines. So just be patient with that. And, and it'll all settle in.
And I would like to, like to thank all the staff for all the work that they put into getting our students back in person. I know it's frustrating to have to wait for all these rules and regulations to be ironed out. We wish we could just, you know, make it happen right away, but unfortunately that is not the case. I know that the county has said they will quickly move to the three feet as long as we keep all the other, you know, face masks and wash, hand washing and all that in place. I, I know it's frustrating for many families as, you know, the different reasons have been stating. So I won't go into that. And I agree with Janet, it's going to be a little hectic once we try to get everybody back in the door. This first couple of weeks are going to be a bit hard. So bear with us and hopefully we can iron out all the problems so that when we return back in person in August, everything will be smooth as can be. And John, I want to thank you and your staff for all the extra work that you guys are doing. I know that for those of us that, you know, are looking in, we want things to go faster. We want things to be done now. And we may forget just how much extra work you guys are all doing with, you know, I remember Liz having to revise plan after plan after plan and, you know, trying to just be ready and prepared. So thank you for preparing us and be ready for moving to the three feet. And thank you for all the parents for their support. And again, I am sorry for all the frustration that you're feeling.
So what I would like to say is I do understand the frustration from the parents. And we all know that the three feet is very promising and hopefully things will get better. I do want to say thank you to all the staff, administrators, teachers, classified staff for doing an excellent work. Again, I think Redwood City is not just trying, but is doing the best that we can. So again, thank you everyone for all your hard work.
I too want to express my thanks, Dr. Baker, the whole staff. I know particularly Dr. Baker, Liz Wolf, I believe you met with every single principal. Actually, you're continuing to meet with every single principal to go over schedules as numbers change and direction from the state and the CDC and soon enough the county changes. So I know it's been really hard for parents and students to pivot like this. It's also been very difficult for our staff to pivot like this. So I just want to acknowledge for our whole community, this has been a very, very hard year. I mean, we're living through a pandemic. It's still in our community. We have to remember that. In fact, I'm going to have Ms. Kelly in a moment, just remind everybody about the travel precautions we all want to take. But I just, you know, I just want to acknowledge, this has been hard. It's frustrating. I know that many of you are mad at us and, you know, we certainly hear that. We've also gotten some really incredible, incredible emails about families that have been well-served during this time. And, and I know that that's not the case for everybody. So I just want to acknowledge that, you know, some of our students and families have been well-served by, by the Herculean efforts that our staff has, has really provided to this community. And I know that for those of you that are frustrated and not getting what you want, just as a reminder, sort of, we are in a pandemic and we are doing the best we can. And I'm very, very proud of the work that we've done. And when I compare us to some of our, the other districts, actually in the state of California, as well as in our county, we actually have been doing more, both in terms of our remote learning practices as well as our in-person. And we're moving in the right direction. I mean, light is really at the end of the tunnel. And as you can see, we're getting the students back who want to be back in person. And I just want to acknowledge, because there was a few comments in the chat, and I did put a link in there for the ABC, or the, is it ABC seven? One of our wonderful teachers from Roosevelt, Lydia Kuss, she very eloquently talks about sort of where she's at with, you know, she's been doing in-person and remote learning, both with the hybrid model. She's been doing that since January and she talked about how it's been going. And one of the questions by the panelists was, why isn't everybody coming back? And so we do have many families in our community that for a variety of reasons are choosing remote distant learning. And for some of that is a safety, health precaution. And for some of our families, they do not have the luxury of quarantining. So if they come, if they come to class and their student gets sent home because it needs, they need to quarantine and the whole family has to quarantine, if those parents cannot go to work, they cannot pay the bills and cover food and housing for their family. So they're very concerned about that. So we have a whole range of diverse needs in our district. And I just want to recognize that because not all of them are always on our board meetings. And so we are trying to accommodate all of our students, educating all of our students this year, no matter where they're at, right? So for those that want to come in person, we're trying to accommodate that. And it's really a social emotional issue. What's wonderful for those kids, they'll be able to come back and be with their teachers and classmates. And for those that need to stay remote learning for a variety of reasons, they will also be able to be connected right through the Zooms, as we've all gotten used to and that sort of thing. So I appreciate the frustration. I think we're all feeling it, want to acknowledge it. And I just want to say, I think we're getting there. And then, you know, there's been a few questions come up for next year. I do think the intention, Dr. Baker, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it would be more of a normal school day. It may look a little different because we will be most likely wearing masks and still maybe staying in cohorts, we're not sure. But in terms of, you know, coming and going to school, it'd be more of a normal school day and normal school week, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So what, what you had before we went into pandemic, right? Before what, March seventeenth or whatever last year, it would be, the day would look more like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I do know there's a lot of questions of people trying to plan for next year. All right. So let's see, I wanted to make sure I covered, oh yeah. So let me call on Ms. Kelly. If you wanted to, we had one of our teachers, thank you for the reminder, okay, just remind everybody about travel precautions and how we want to keep ourselves safe. We are in, you know, we've, we've moved into, you know, a lower level tier. We want to stay that way. So if you could go ahead and talk about that, Ms. Kelly, that'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, President McAvoy. So yes, in fact, we were just checking this afternoon. We're checking day by day as spring break is around the corner. So this reminder is very timely. So for families, because we divide families and employees, because actually we're looking at an additional guidance for employees through Cal OSHA, and that has not changed. But for families, it is still remains that travel is not encouraged over a hundred and twenty miles from their home. And then it's recommended to quarantine for the required ten days, so ten school days in our case. So that is still in effect. I wish it were not the case, because I think there's a lot of people itching to move around and have a change of scenery. However, it's very important for our district that that, that families pay close, special attention to that. Because when we come back on April fifth after spring break, there will be student testing available. It's, we cannot mandate it, as you know, but it's strongly encouraged for families that feel comfortable to have their students participate in the testing and of course, staff testing as well on April fifth and April sixth. So we have a great plan in place with our nurses and our student nurses to make sure that that happens in a seamless way. So that travel advisory, as I mentioned in the last board meeting, is still in effect. Thank you.
We get any updates, we'll certainly be sending them out. And I imagine, Dr. Baker, you'll be reminding everybody about this in your Friday email. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll do that. And it's very important that we adhere to it because we did learn there was a school in Burlingame that they had to close because of an absurd COVID cases. And so it's very important that we adhere to these mitigating factors that they tell us to watch for. So just, we will put it out there again. And it's our hope that everyone will, will follow the guidelines.
So just some clarity, because I see a comment in the chat saying this is not true. Quarantine is only recommended if we're taking in high-risk behavior. But I do not think that's the guidance we're given. Is that right, Ms. Kelly? Just that, okay. No. Well, I'm, I'm extremely confused now. I'm reading the chat. So if somebody with more information wants to add some clarification, that would be terrific.
So the message that I sent to, the message that I sent out last week is the message that we took completely. We took it directly from the guidelines.
So just to clarify, your message that came directly from the guidelines say that travel outside a hundred and twenty miles is discouraged and that quarantine is recommended if you've participated in high-risk behavior.
Right, right.
Right. So people who are not participating in high-risk behavior but have traveled outside the hundred and twenty miles, there is no recommendation to quarantine? Based on the information that you sent out?
Correct, correct. That's what I sent out last week on Friday. And we got that information directly from Patricia Love, who is at the County Office of Education. So we will, I will review that again, because that's who I got the information from.
Okay. And so those high-risk behaviors that were specified are traveling on public transportation, interacting with people outside your home without masks. I believe those were the two things that were listed.
Like if you're on an airline, that was one of them.
I'm asking because we have families that are traveling to like Airbnbs outside the hundred and twenty mile radius that will just be with their families and that's not high-risk behavior. And so the information that you sent out says that they don't have to quarantine. I just want to clarify that, because that's where the confusion in the chat's coming from.
Okay. We will, I will review this again with, and we will also review it with Patricia Love at the County Office of Education to make sure I sent out them. Now, now I'm getting confused. I thought what I sent out last week on. Now, now I'm getting confused. I thought what I sent out last week on Friday was definitely, this thing keeps jumping. What I sent out on Friday was exactly what the County Office of Ed is recommending that we place into our case to the community.
All right, well.
I will, I will go back. I will go back and, and look, I'm almost sure that I'm, I'm fine.
No, I think it highlights that, you know, every day, every week, there's new guidance. And so it is sometimes hard to fully appreciate what it is. So Dr. Baker, we'll double check what the latest is. We'll send out the very latest on Friday. All right. Okay, yeah. And so Wendy Kelly just put that, you know, anyway. All right. So we'll, we'll.
I will double check when you give me this. And I will, we got it right from the County Office of Ed, from Patricia Love.
All right. Well, thank you to everybody who's commenting just to help, help us get the correct guidelines going. So we'll do that. All right. So any other questions or comments before we move off of this topic? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So we are on to 9.1B, which is the vision and mission. And this is a carryover from our six o'clock study session. So Linda, are you going to pull up this?
Yes, I sure can. I just want to make sure I can share my screen. Yes. No, I can't.
Can you need to be made a host, Linda? Is that what it is?
I believe so. I don't, I can't, I don't see that I can share my screen.
So, so Kyle, can you make Linda host?
Yeah, I can, I can go ahead and maybe start just with an introduction while you get the slides up. All right. So. Oh, there we go. That was fast. Did you want to say anything about this before I get going?
I think you're good, Alyssa. You're, you're, and you and Cecilia are taking this one on.
Yeah. All right. So for those of, those of you in the audience who may have not been at our study session, we just had a really informative study session that reviewed our Equity Consciousness Committee work and our new administrative regulations. So as a reminder, we, we approved an equity policy back in November. And then we've gone through a committee process, about 80 of us, working with the National Urban Alliance. And we came up with the equity policy, the administrative regulations. And right now, we're going to talk about the vision and mission. And so Cecilia and I, who are the two board members who were on the smaller subcommittee that worked on the vision and mission, are going to quickly go through the slides and then we'll have a chance to reflect upon the vision and mission that was drafted by the smaller group and get any comments that people might have. And this is a discussion item, so not an approval this evening. All right. Oh, actually, can you go back real quick to the slide? Sorry. So the vision is, as a reminder, what you want to see. So kind of our inspiration, our guiding light, what we want to see. And then our mission will be what you believe is necessary to make the vision a reality. So sort of the actions that we're going to take. Okay, next slide. So why is it time to revisit these? Well, I know that when I started on the board many years ago is when we updated our mission statement. And we actually have not had a vision statement. We do have a mission, goals and beliefs. And so with our new equity policy and our work with the National Urban Alliance across the district, we decided it was fine. All right. So developing a vision and mission statement, the important thing about this slide that I just want to bring up is the smaller group of us that drafted the vision and mission statement was a subset of the overall committee. And we really drew from the committee's work. So the 80 people on the committee, our 10-plus hours worth of work together, all of our homework, in addition to that, went into the vision and mission for our district. And so we use the multi-flow maps, which I know many of you have seen. We use the do section of the do's and don'ts, so things that we want to see in our district. And we used our, the commitment documents along with really everything that we had. And there were 13 different groups that we were able to draw from. Next slide. And Cecilia will cover the next.
So although I was not part of the Equity Committee meetings that was held, again, by about 80-plus staff members, administration, parents and community members, Alyssa and I were actually very fortunate to be in this committee as board members. And our homework was to work on ideas and values that resonated with us. And so these are some of the items that we actually chose from the bigger group, which was about 12 groups all put together. So then we then highlighted the most, the words that resonated more with the, with the group. And we worked with Dr. Yvette Jackson and Linda Montes. Next. And then here for the development, developing a vision, again, what was our dream as a board and as a Redwood City community? There was values and ideas that we had to put together. And again, all this came down from a group of 12, 12 groups from about 80 people. So we pretty much narrowed it down. Next. And then here, we continue with our values and ideas, and then we added the beliefs. Everyone believes that every child deserves to get what they need to be successful. Next. So the vision statement, I will read it. It's, "We believe in the unique strengths and gifts of each individual student to achieve high intellectual performances for personal success. As respectful and caring adults, we affirm our collective responsibility for cultivating engaged community members." Next. And Alyssa, you're going to talk about that one?
Sorry, I was muted. Can you go back to the previous slide? So real quick, for the mission statement, we used a similar process. We drew words and phrases from the collective work. And then we highlighted those that we wanted to move over to the mission, so kind of the actionable items. So go ahead and go to the next slide. And then this is the mission statement that we came up with. And I think what we could do is go to the next slide, which has the vision and mission side by side. And if folks want to just take a moment to review that. But I know that, you know, some of this came directly from the committee's work, "To encourage students' bravery, voice and leadership, to instill passion and learning, to create inclusive and supportive environments for all learners, all abilities, all ethnicities and cultural identities, LGBTQ plus and multilingual learners. To offer opportunities and access to rigorous supportive teaching and enriching resources to inspire the development of student strengths. To ensure that all R C S D staff and community members will be the voice of encouragement to dismantle barriers and provide students with learning strategies needed for personal confidence to help with student success in life." So at this point, what I'd like to do is see if there's any comments, questions from the board, and I will look over to see if we have any speaker cards.
Alyssa, I have a clarifying question. I think my confusion comes from the way the vision and mission definitions are defined when you guys are doing your work. To me, the mission was the purpose. Why are we here? Why does Redwood City School District exist? And by looking at that, it's in the present. The vision would be more of what we want to see in the future and what is it that we need to do to get there in order to achieve it, which would be more of the, what's in the mission. So can you guys kind of help me understand?
I can just give you my impressions of the vision is kind of like a guiding light of where we want to believe and be, right? And you're right, the mission is like, what are our actions and how to get there? So, yeah, I could just clarify. Where, where do we want to be in terms of the mission? That's, that's our, that's what we're aiming for. That's the guiding light. I keep, I keep hearing Yvette saying, there's light of where we want to be for the future. So. And then.
Yeah, I mean, I like a lot of the, the verbiage that's here. And I think when we did this a few years back, we had a similar issue where we believe in all these things that we want to do. But again, to me, I think I see it reverse. The mission is, why, why do we exist? Why is Redwood City School District here to do? And then the vision is, for example, equity work. To me, that has been very important. And throughout the years that I've been here, I think this is the closest we've gotten to making additional progress on it. So I'm, I'm just a little confused on that part.
Linda, could you go back to the very first slide of this? I wonder if maybe. Yeah. So does, is this, so, so I think what you're saying, Maria, is that you've had a different interpretation or definition of vision and mission than one that we're using? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Right. And, and the previous ones that we've done, and in other organization, I see the mission is, why does this organization exist? What are we here to do? And by that, whatever statement you make, as an employee or as a part of the, a member of this organization or group, I should be able to have values that help me to do my work in a certain way. Let's just take the school. So if someone comes and there's, you know, a problem, a barrier for those people, as a member of the organization, if one of the things I believe is that we need to provide equity, then I need to look at that. We're here to provide X, Y, and Z, and it needs to be equitable. So how do I remove that barrier? When the vision for me, and what we talked about is, what do we want to see in the future? For example, now with the equity work, involving it into the LCAP or whatever it's called now, and making that part of it, making sure that all the departments look at it, and a lot of the other kind of things that we want to see in the future. So I think that's where my confusion is. Because this is different than what I have experienced.
Yeah, I will, I can just add that we looked at sample organizations of vision statements. Like kind of famous statements or whatever from different schools or actually organizations, companies. And it seemed as if the idea of that vision was also like what we expect. Like what, what does, you're right, what does the organization stand for? And so if it's just the wording or the way it's worded, maybe, I'm not sure if that's helpful.
Yeah. I mean, it's like, in one of the things I was looking at is, what do we do? Who do we serve? How do we serve them? That's like our everyday thing. And that's why I think the, the reason we didn't have a vision statement in the last one was because we got quite into this and into the beliefs and values that we had. And the, you know, we wanted to make sure we included all these things. But I think if you make it too long, then it doesn't really work. It has to be something that's shortened, that people remember and know why they're, why, it's not just another document, is what I'm saying. I don't know. How did the rest of you feel?
Oh, the specific thing around the mission and how long it is, because I know I asked Dr. Yvette Jackson about that. I said, boy, this is a lot longer than our last one. And our philosophy last time was to have something short that everybody could remember, right? Our T and K kids are an adult, me, who has a hard time remembering everything, right? So, so that she said, oh, no, she's seen mission statements even longer than that. So I think, I think it really is up to us at the end of the day, right? One thought I had is if we did keep a longer mission statement, which that's still a question, because it may be that we choose not to do that. We could have some kind of tagline. So you've got a vision, a mission and a tagline. So for example, like Nike's tagline is just do it, right? So it was kind of, anyway, but I, but I think your point is a good one. I did want to Google, you know, definition of vision and mission. A vision, a vision statement focuses on tomorrow and what an organization wants to do to ultimately become. So it is sort of that guiding light, right? That vision of where we're going. And then a mission statement focuses on today and what an organization does to achieve it. Both are vital in directing, vital in directing goals. So.
So that's what I was saying. So the mission to me is, what am I here for every day? Whether I buy, I drive the bus, serve the lunch, what am I, what am I, what is this organization all about? And the vision is that guiding light, where do we want to be? What kind of district do we want to be? What kind of students do we want to have? You know, what do they need to have? What kind of skills? What kind of, you know, programs we need to provide them with, et cetera?
So can I just put my two cents into this, just to see if I can clarify it a little bit? The way I see it is the vision is, again, what you're going to see at the end of the tunnel, what, again, what we believe, right? The mission, the wordest is what we need to do to get to our vision. So in this case, like Alyssa said, it's a long vision, I mean, mission. But I believe that everything that is in here, we need to do and we must do to get to where we want to be. Again, the Redwood City School District has done a lot. And with this whole equity piece, I think it's very important to be encouraged to create, to offer, to ensure. So all those things in the mission just makes what our district is thriving to, to be. So I'm not sure if I make any sense and you understand what I'm trying to say, but it's like, the vision is what you see. The mission is what you have to do in order to accomplish and get to where you want to be.
Right. And I think that's where my confusion comes in, because I've always known it to be the reverse. The vision, and I understand what you're saying, we need to do these things in order to get to the end of that tunnel. But I think they're, they're backwards in my understanding. And all of it is important, as you said. I don't know. What do the rest of you think?
Mike, I see you unmuted. Do you want to?
Yeah, sure. I mean, before we get right into it, I just love the fact that we're actually putting these together. You know, it's just, it's really, it's neat to see that putting a strong voice for equity and a clear commitment to this asset-based thinking and the celebration of the unique identity and individuality of every student. I'm really, you know, thrilled that we're doing it. I think at the last Equity Committee check-in, Dr. Montes walked us through complex change, and it's kind of like managing, managing is complex, right? I mean, it needs all the pieces in place. It's the vision, the action plan, skills, resources, motivators and assessments. And without a clear vision, you know, even with everything else that just ends in chaos. So I'm really, I really appreciate all the work that everybody's done to get, get to this point of putting it in here. On the vision statement, you know, I kind of like to think of it as, I think is where you're saying here, it's sort of aspirational. It's what we want to see happen. You know, it's kind of the future. And so I have this little prompt that I put in place when I try and think of, when I read a vision statement to see how it feels to me. And I've done this for other schools, looking at other schools' visions as well, but it's, you know, just, I try and put the words, "Our vision is a world where," in front of it. And see what I think of that when I, when I end up reading the vision. Now, we wouldn't actually put "Our vision is the world where" into the vision statement, but it sort of helps me frame what's, what's the vision or think about it. You can, you can try it with some other ones. So just tactically, if we get down to this. So just tactically, if we get down to this, it says, our vision is a world where we believe in the unique strengths and the gifts of each individual student to achieve high intellectual performance, et cetera. And so the way I would read it that way is that we're saying that our aspiration is to. You know, it's our aspiration to believe. That, that's just how it comes across to me when I read it. But I think what it's trying to say is something different, that our aspiration isn't to believe, right? That our aspiration is actually in the students, right? Achieving this high intellectual performance. So that would be something more like our vision is a world where students achieve high intellectual performance for personal success because of the unique strengths and gifts of each individual, or something along those lines. So when I, when I hear that, when I read that vision statement, that's, that's kind of what I hear from it. The mission statement has so many things that we want to do. Alyssa, I'm in your camp of. I always thought mission statements were supposed to be something that we could walk around and recall from memory instantly. And I know that's really hard to be able to get there. But it's worth thinking about having the discipline. We can always have the supporting statements there, because I don't want to minimize any of these. And I realize that when you try and put it into a single sentence, you're going to lose the context and the specificity that's probably really important for the work that we're trying to do here. And yet, I find often that we'll want to have conversations that are just going to be able to say, you know, is, does this decision support our mission? And to be able to recall it instantly and say, does this report, does this, you know, decision support our mission? And, and know the one, and we're all thinking of the same one. You know, maybe it is to instill passion in learning, right? So we can say, does this, you know, does this decision support our mission to instill passion in learning? It, it can be a, it's a powerful tool, right? To be able to ground us back in where we're trying to head. And if we have to go back to a mission statement because we can't walk around with it, or we're all thinking of a different bullet on it. You know, that, that, that tool and that, that facility for decision-making and for, for anchoring conversations around a common understanding. We, we lose a little bit of that. And so. All of this is important, and I think we can have a long mission statement. But you, you know, they can say something where all of these are a part of it and it's important. But the headline should be, you know, our mission is to eliminate inequities in education. You know, you pick your choice. And then we're going to do that through encouraging students and something along those lines. I, I think that's worth reviewing, because it's nice to have that prompt for conversations. Oh, also, one other thing I wanted to mention was that we were talking earlier about the DARE tool when we were looking through the ARs. But the very first domain in the DARE tool is a clear ambitious vision for district-wide racial equity. And all through that, it says, you know, has the district made a public commitment to racial equity? And you know, and it says you're supposed to look for a mission and/or vision statement that includes explicit language prioritizing racial equity. So I just wanted to call that out from the domain tool.
Janet, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, if you look at what we currently have as a mission statement and our beliefs, it's, it's very soft. And so I'm happy that we're looking at this wording and really firming it up. And including equity for all. I do understand, Maria, what you were talking about with the mission statement being a short statement. And I'm wondering if there's a way to tweak it to include mission, vision, and values. And having a shorter mission statement, and then maybe the bulk of what's written under mission right now could be tweaked into the values. I, I don't, like Mike said, I don't really want to. Trim it down and lose this stuff. It's really important. So maybe just tweaking the way it's presented. And having that shorter mission statement that we do reflect back on and know. You know, our mission is educating all students for success, which I would advocate changing that. That's part of what I'm talking about is just a little soft. Or a lot soft.
Can you just repeat what you just said, that last little bit?
So I, our current mission statement is educating all students for success. And I think we know that, we have that in our heads, it's something we can come back to. I think maybe writing a short mission statement. That includes this that you already have in a short form. Would be good. And then taking the bulk of what's in the current mission that I see in front of me and turning that into values. So we have the mission, the vision, and the values. You often see those three paired together.
Yeah, I like that, Janet. I think the last time we were trying to get to the values and we had a lot of discussions and there were some other conversations. So we decided. To compromise and just have that list that, that comes after. But I like the idea of having these. You know, a shorter mission and then the values that we value all this. Because I, I like what's here. I just need a little clarity on how it's going to work. So it doesn't end up just something on the wall or on a document somewhere.
So one option is. For smaller group, goes back the drawing board with the comments we got tonight. And maybe try to come up with some other wording or additional options. Or we can agendize this for another night and maybe try to do it collectively. I, I think so, I, I certainly hear the sentiment. Expressed from Mike, Janet, and Maria for a shorter mission statement. And then moving some of what's in the mission to values, which is sort of like what we had with beliefs, right? And I think we could even go back to our beliefs and see if there's anything we're missing, right? So maybe it's values or beliefs. And then, Maria, I don't know if we've. Helped clarify the vision and mission, if it's. And I guess I have a question, I think, Mike, you made a couple of maybe tweaks around the vision. But. One question I have is this, is this the vision that we have for our school district? And then the mission, maybe we, we try to come up with something shorter, whether it's what we already have or to instill passion in learning or whatever, and then have values or beliefs. And, and I guess the only other thing I want to say is I want to honor the, the work that the committee did. There were so many powerful words and expressions and, and real. Desires, I think, out of some of those parents and students. And actually, we even listened to the student work too. We had some of that, we didn't even talk about that earlier. So I think it is important through the values and beliefs, that we don't have them in the mission to make sure we acknowledge those. So anyway, so any comments to what I just said? Of the process we should go through to, to work on finalizing these. I, I think Cecilia and I are happy to do whatever. We can either try to take it back and work on it some more, or we can try to do it collectively.
Right, so, you know, we're a team. So I would also like to include Dr. Baker in the discussion. Because I think his voice is needed, in my opinion, anyway.
Right, and Dr. Baker was involved with this process. But yes, yeah, why don't you, yeah, Dr. Baker, please, go ahead.
So, so I was going to suggest. It would probably best to have. We would have to add a meeting at some point in time and just hammer it out then. Because I think this going back and forth is not going to work for us. I can see us going back and coming up and looking, I'm taking notes of what everyone is saying. But I think it, there's value in listening to one another at one time when you're creating. So I would rather recommend that we take another meeting and that meeting is totally devoted to this. Creating the mission, vision, or there goes mission, vision, values, or however we are going to go. And in what direction you feel best. And, and I, I do understand what Mike is saying and what others are saying. Yeah, your mission should be quite compact and then move the values underneath it so that you know it right from the top of your head. And this is what we're doing to get there. So I get that. But by just a small group going and doing that, and then bringing it back to the larger group for additional feedback. I think time would be better spent if we devoted one evening totally to this. And we start from six and we go to nine, there's three hours.
I think that's a good idea, Dr. Baker.
I concur.
And I do, I really appreciate the work that Alyssa and Cecilia and the, the rest of the committee have put into this. I think this is great. I think it's a great place for us to build from. So really appreciate all that, the effort that's gone into this already. And the input from Dr. Jackson as well.
Yeah, I, I really like a lot of the statements here as well. So I just want to publicly thank everybody that's been involved in putting this together. And I am also very pleased to know that. The Spanish-speaking parents and students were also included. And had a, and that their voice and. What they want to see is reflected in this work as well. And thank you to Alyssa and Cecilia for doing the extra work as well.
We will agendize this at a future meeting and work it out collectively.
Okay, so I know that Dr. Baker was talking about how you're going to share it out, et cetera. And we had brainstormed some ideas. So these are, again, some ideas of how, when it's completed, it will be shared out. And then we were practicing with a group of students about how they could create their own videos, et cetera, of sharing it out. To other students. And we practiced with a guest speaker. And so what I just wanted to share, Keen Thana was a guest speaker at one of our student voice sessions. And I, I think he also would be an awesome teacher. He was wonderful when we practiced. How we can share our district mission with students, so they knew where we were going as well. So I just wanted to share that out. And thank you, a shout out to Huahua for, for that.
Thank you again, Dr. Montes, for really leading us through this effort. You have just put your heart and soul into all of this, I really appreciate it.
Oh, it's definitely group, group work. It's all the committee work and then just trying to compile a lot of information. So thanks, everyone.
Yeah, so thanks. Okay, so it is 9:03, so let's take a five-minute break and then we'll try to get through the rest of the agenda. Well, we actually will get through the rest of the agenda, but we'll take a five-minute break. Turn on their cameras so I can see that you're here. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. So our next item is 9.2, the first reading and discussion of board policy on comprehensive local plan for special education.
Thank you. So thank you to the committee for meeting. We're bringing three board policies to you tonight. This one is regarding the local plan for special education. And as you can see in the board memo, there, really, and we went through this policy actually with Dr. Polino, our Director of Special Ed. Who ensures me that all of these items that are referenced in here have been put in place already. However, there are new items such as the SB 98, which extends from July 1, 2021 to July 1, 2023. The date by which the SALPA must include its local plan of annual assurances to support how the SALPA and its participating agencies are coordinating to. To assure effective outcomes with students with disabilities. So there are a few items like that in here because of new laws. This policy was due to be updated. And so this would be a great time to ask any questions you might have on the board policy.
All right, any questions? Doesn't look like it. I just looked, we don't have any, this is also sort of a first reading in case there's questions from the public as well. And I don't see any questions there. All right, so this is just discussion items. We'll go on to the first reading for 9.3 is on food service operations cafeteria fund.
Thank you, and this is a first read, thank you, Alyssa. Regarding food service operations, there is a new law, SB 265, which is not new to us in the sense that we've had a process in place regarding the ability of students to, to eat meals regardless of whether or not they're contributing funds. And, no, and if not, they can, students can also receive an alternative meal, if that's the case. So that's not new to us. However, the board policy did need to be updated as such. And then there is another administrative review cycle. So that was added to this board policy as well, that will go through actually next school year. That is new in SB 265. So Anna Ligu is also here tonight representing food service. If there's any additional questions that you might have regarding the program or any specifics. The Food Service Department also reviewed this board policy and was encouraged to bring it back to the committee to review and look at an upcoming committee work for food service specifically.
I was just going to clarify, you mean the Food Service Committee, correct?
Yes, Food Service Committee.
Can I just clarify one thing that sounded like, I just want to make sure, so this policy is saying that they, there's no differentiation, whether they have the funds to pay or not, right? It's not a different meal, they get the same meal. That's what's new in this policy, did I read that right?
Right, and will not be penalized as such.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions, any other questions?
So we'll go to 9.4, the first reading and discussion on the board policy around safety.
Thank you, so this first reading is in regards to a few things. Once again, many of which are in place already, so it was very timely to take a look at this policy. But the board may not know that over the last few years, something new that has come to be is through SB 316. Is to address, to, on the back of student ID cards, certainly in middle school. There is information provided regarding a suicide prevention hotline and domestic violence hotline that are put on the back of cards. And that actually has been happening for a few years with our students. So that is already in effect. One board member brought up the idea that we noticed a typo in here with our committee. That we should actually just address seventh and eighth grade, even though this policy is for seventh through 12th grade. So we will make that change when I bring it back for that reading. And then a second item in regards to administrative regulations, which I know the board does not approve. But to note that it does address lab safety, especially in our middle school classrooms in which there's dissections and so forth. So while teachers have been doing an excellent job with, with implementing lab safety. This is now put in a little bit more clearly with the ARs. Are there any questions regarding this one?
On the safety numbers, did, did you say that those are printed on all cards for all students in all grades, or is it?
So it's definitely on middle school cards. However, what's interesting is the companies that we use for class pictures and so forth have been implementing this for all the cards that they're making. So yes, it is on there. But it's only required for seventh and eighth grade.
Right, right, yeah.
By this particular law, yeah, just to be clear.
It looks like there's no questions, comments? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're on to consent items. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, and just as a reminder, this includes 11.1 and 11.2. As well as all the 10s.
So moved.
All right, Maria?
Second.
Mike is a second, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Jose Marcos.
Aye.
Vice President Jesus Locum.
Aye.
President Maccabell.
Aye.
Okay, we're to the report from board members and superintendent. Who would like to go first?
I'll go, so all I've been doing is, well, not all I've been doing, but. Some of the stuff I've been doing is listening to parents who are concerned about, you know, the reopening and. And helping them with a few other issues. So that's where I've been spending my time.
Then I have just bond committee to report.
So I attended.
I don't have anything.
Sorry, Cecilia, I interrupted you. So I.
I don't know if you just heard me, sorry.
Oh, Elisa, you're on mute.
Sorry, I was just saying, Cecilia, why don't you go ahead and go and then we'll hear from Janet, we were hearing both of you at the same time, we weren't sure what got said.
Okay, sorry, so no, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, right, you had a lot of equity work, but we already covered that, all right, Janet, you're up.
I attended the RCTA climate committee meeting with Dr. Baker and Wendy a while ago. And then we had a workforce housing meeting, we met with Sabrato. And we'll be bringing an update in a study session, April 14th, I believe. So looking forward to that. And then we had a Redwood City Together, formerly Redwood City 2020 meeting, I think last week, maybe it was this week, it's been a long week.
Okay, so let's see, on the Redwood City Together meeting, I just wanted to highlight that we did discuss the COVID-19 needs assessment. So actually, I just realized that that's something we'll have to send out to the rest of the board. So it's an effort that the John Gardner Center has been going through. And they've collectively taken data, but then they're also doing some extra surveying. Many of them are our families and it's got some really good data. And Dr. Baker's been working closely with the John Gardner Center on it. But I just, they're, they did one round and then it's been six months since they surveyed the individuals in our community. And many of them are in the North Fair Oaks community. And so they're gonna do another round, so we'll have to send out the report to the rest of the board, John, yeah, just on that. And actually, I'll just say, I mean, it highlights many of the things we already know, but it gives us a little more detail. Certainly, food security is still a really big issue, which I know at least some of us were surprised about. Because we know that there's been so much effort by Second Harvest Food Bank and our own school district and others to get food out. So that was an aha for some of us that there is still a lot of food security issues. And then housing, of course, was high up there. And I think those were kind of the two high ones, but we'll, we'll send out the report to the rest of you. But that was probably the, yeah, the most meaty of the conversations. We also talked about they're working on a new logo and then we just got some various updates. So I did want to say, I also intended, attended two safe routes to school meetings. And that group has gotten more active again. And I think I reported already about the Jefferson and Cleveland, but we did get an update. And that's the, that's near the intersection of North Star and MIT. And actually, probably some of our kids might even use it to get to some of our other schools, depending upon where they live. So the construction will still be going on through May, so I did highlight to the staff. And asked them if we could get a crossing guard out there, particularly as we start back. So actually, another aha moment was to all of our partners in the Safe Routes to School. We had Sal there and the Police Department and Redwood City Planning and some others. Just letting them know that our kids are coming back to school. And some of them are like, oh, my gosh, that's gonna be like first day at school. And we know that parents and kids need to work out how they're getting to school and safety and all that. So, Dr. Baker, it was a reminder that we need to make sure, maybe you've already had conversations with Melissa and some of our police and sheriff. But we may want to just give them a heads up that kids are gonna be coming back, certainly more in full force, starting, what, April 5th? And then the high school, about a third of their students will be coming back, starting that same week on the Monday, Sequoia High School. And I guess Woodside as well.
They're starting, they're starting on that Monday also, Elisa.
They are, yes, they are, so it's gonna be a rude awakening for the community, having not had the school transportation, right, in the morning. So I was thinking, we may want to alert them to even put it in the Redwood City newsletter. You know, there's some other opportunities for some little blurbs, just to let people know. So that was actually a good meeting because, you know, I realized, oh, my goodness, they don't even know that we're going back to school, okay. Oh, and we also heard about, oh, this was good, so the other thing we heard about in that meeting was from the Office of Sustainability with the county. And they are working on North Fair Oaks, a bike and pedestrian lane crossing as part of the overall plan they're doing. And what you could tell is that there was very little safe bike lanes in the North Fair Oaks area. And they've got a lot of plans for more and they are including our safe routes to school information and all of that. So we should be seeing, they're actually applying for grant funding and we should be seeing some improvements hopefully in the next couple of years. But right now, they're seeking out grant, grant funding for all of that. And then in addition, there's a group of parents who are interested in safe routes from the Mount Carmel area to the Clifford School. Because with our new boundary changes, there's a further distance now for those kids to get to the neighborhood school. So there was an effort in terms of how do we do a longer safe routes with like a bike lane or something. So anyway, there's a lot of activity happening and I'll try to keep you updated. And if there, I think there was a couple of reports I can send out as well from that. Then, let's see, CSBA, we had a board meeting, it was very much focused on reopening. There's a lot of various bills that could affect us, including things around digital access and funding. And they're looking at full and fair funding, whether or not to put something on the November 2022 ballot. Around full and fair funding, so more on that, they're doing the polling and talking to people and everybody right now. We also had a CSBA legislative, legislative action week. And I attended the meetings with Weiner, Mullenstaff and Berman. And the big areas there was around budget, digital access bills, labor bills, and then COVID liability, which has become a big issue. For school districts, especially as more students and staff are in the concerns around liability. So CSBA is really pushing to try to get some additional liability waivers around, liability protections. You know, for potential lawsuits and things like that. And then this Saturday is reminders of San Mateo County School Boards Association Legislative Action Day with our local legislators. And the topics will be more localized and actually, one of the big ones is around equity in, in the county. So if you can attend that, I'm sure you've gotten the messages on that. Let's see, we had a superintendent coffee with Clifford. And then Janet, you and I also had a wonderful tour, it was my first thing doing anything in person like that in a year. Weird, but we, we had a nice tour of the daycare center, the process, the new footsteps. And my goodness, what a beautiful facility, right? And then Janet, you got to see the retired, the senior.
Right, so we toured, so this is the, the property that's directly across from the district office that has just gone up. So we toured the daycare facility that's gonna be opening in July. Really, really wonderful facility and they, at their highest capacity, they can take 78 kids and they're taking infants through five. Which is, we talk about developing workforce housing on our property. How ideal that would be for our staff to have this childcare center directly across the street. And then there's the senior living facility right next door that we got to tour. We saw one of the apartments and the beautiful courtyard they have. And the partnership, I talked with the director of the new center and, you know, just her vision to combine. They, they had talked about having the seniors come over, but when we saw the courtyard with all these beautiful tables and the, there's actually. Planting area for the seniors to grow their own, you know, garden. And how great it would be to have, you know, the young kids come over and help with planting or sit at the tables and play, you know, chutes and ladders and Candyland with the seniors. So it's a really neat facility and it's been a long time coming, working with, I think Hart was working on this, this project too. So it's really exciting. And then as I was standing there, you know, going up the stairwell, looking out at our property, thinking, seeing, you know, what we have there and what could be developed. You know, in our property and how great that would be, so.
Yeah, certainly, they were very interested in wanting to know about our workforce housing because they see our staff as future for clients to their daycare.
Right, so there are a few of them that asked for me to send on the Zoom link once we have it for our April 14th meeting, so I'll be doing that.
Okay, that's it, Dr. Baker?
No, everything you've listed, I've attended, so, no. The only thing is, you know, the meetings with the principals and of course, the superintendent meetings that have been going on. Almost, you know, two, three times a week, because of everything changing, these guidelines changing. And all the superintendents just want to get on top of it as soon as possible, so. That's, that's been where I've been on things.
Right, so information, we had a couple items there, we had the San Mateo County First Interim Financial and Budget Overview. And I'm sure everyone had a chance to take a look at that. The good news is, we are financially sound, that's always a good letter to get, acknowledge that. And then, was there any questions on that? Okay, and then information on the San Mateo County Investment Fund, any questions on that? Slow but steady progress in the interest, I don't even think it keeps up with inflation, but it's there. All right, correspondence, I know we've gotten a lot of emails about reopening questions, anything else that folks want to report on? All right, other business suggested items for future agenda, vision and mission and values will be on that at some point. Anything else?
So this is probably a time to pick a date, correct? So you all have calendars with you, so I'm going to suggest the 28th, which is not a board meeting night. That's of April.
I have on my calendar that that's a bond study session, did that get moved to something else?
Is that what that is, Priscilla, do you think it's bond study session on the 28th?
Yes, that's in the calendar.
Okay. All right, we can't do that one then.
So actually, just to clarify, because I did not have it in my calendar, just a bond study session, what time?
I think it's starting at six, from six to eight, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Janet?
That's what I have, yeah.
When I, I remember, remember one of the meetings that I, I went to, I was mentioned with that last meeting, I didn't catch it, so. All right, so it, that's already on the agenda, so Ellie, it's a, it's a special session.
Mike, did you have that?
Yeah, I did 28th too, that's.
Of April.
Right.
April, for budget bond, right, I think that's, the bond budget, I think we were gonna go to.
Yep.
We had set aside potentially one other Friday as like a retreat. And am I imagining that? Oh, I'm not sure I can make that one, I'm still trying to get clarity on that day, so never mind. All right, let's just continue to look for Wednesdays then.
So the, the meetings in Wednesday, Ellie, I'm sorry, Ellie, in May, the Wednesday meetings in May, the 12th and the 26th, is that correct?
We have board meetings on May 5th and May 19th, those are regular board meetings.
The 5th and the 19th, so. We could do the 12th.
Yeah, I have to double check, my kids were getting, yeah, I'm not sure I can do that, but I might be able to. So we could, like, let me get one other date.
So then if it's not, if it's not the 12th, then it would be the 26th.
Lisa, was the Friday you were looking at, that you were saying you need to confirm was the May 7th one? Because I have that held on my calendar too, but I wasn't sure if that was.
It's the May 7th one.
Okay, so we can't, we can't.
That's not the one I have saved, just a minute, let me.
April 23rd.
Yeah, April 23rd is the one I'm not sure about. And you had May 7th as another one?
I don't know, I might have counted it wrong.
No, I have that too.
Oh, okay, good.
I think we put a lot of dates in.
Yeah, we did.
Sure, there is a May 7th.
There is a May 7th. I mean, we could take a couple hours out of that, I don't know what else you had on that one, John.
On the May 7th? That was, that was another offsite for us, we were gonna, we could do the 23rd and we could do the 7th and then. Can, which, Elisa, have you, do you know if you can do either one of those?
Which one?
Either the 20th, April 23rd or May 7th?
May 7th, yes, April 23rd, I don't know.
Okay, so why don't we plan on the May 7th?
May 7th is a holiday, isn't that?
Hold on, let me check.
Oh, yeah, we don't have school that day.
I have it down as a workday, so I wasn't sure if you were allowed to work on a workday or how that works, but.
Workday. Yeah, so, so we could still do it on May 7th. I know Janet and Cecilia, they have the children that are still in school, I mean, they'll be off, you know.
It's not a big deal for me.
Okay.
Find out about May 12th, I mean, literally, we just decided earlier today to switch some tickets to that day, you know what I mean? So I just need to find out if we've already done that, but if they haven't done it already, I'll tell them, don't do that. So May 12th, we could possibly do, or May 26th is another option, or May 7th, right?
Right, or May 7th, May 7th would be that Friday that we would do.
I mean, it's fine with me, so I guess, was it okay with those of you who would normally have it off?
It's fine with me.
Mike has it on his calendar, Cecilia?
Me too.
Okay, Cecilia has. All right, so then why don't we narrow it, let's, let's narrow it to May 7th, how's that?
Sounds good.
All right, Ellie, that's an offsite on May 7th. I, I can't hear you, Elisa, what'd you say?
Oh. Anyway, I was just saying, we'll, we'll have time for other agenda items as well, so we can spend a couple hours on vision and mission and values and then whatever else we need to cover, is that right?
Right, right, you'll find out on Friday where there's some other things we have to do.
Okay. Why my microphone is all of a sudden not working as well, okay.
May 7th, then, perfect.
All right. Good, okay. Let's see, anything else under that agenda item? Okay, changes to, okay, we just did the scheduling. All right, adjournment. Motion to approve?
So moved.
You all like this so much, we're gonna stay all night, okay, Maria. Have a second?
Second.
Cecilia, a second, and I'm assuming we're all a yes. All right, well, thank you panelists for hanging in there, thank you attendees for hanging in there. I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.